Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council. It's September the 19th. Councilman, Vice Mayor Shackleton has our prayer and our pledge.
That's just fine, Mayor. Thank you. I had a friend show up at our meeting tonight, a longtime friend and someone that I wanted to, don't have to introduce him, but I asked him to do our opening prayer. Dan Alcorn, would you come? Dan's going to do our opening prayer.
Thank you, Bill. Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord Jesus, for everything you do for us. Lord, you tell us not to lean up on our own understanding, but just acknowledge you, let you direct our paths. Father, we ask for directions tonight in the minds of the people, the folks that are here. It will be Christ honoring that Lord will see your hand in everything that's done. Again, we thank you for dying on the cross for us. Thank you for giving us eternal life, and we ask for your blessings upon this meeting tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Have a very special recognition tonight. So Ron Crabtree has served faithfully, and if I were to read this entire proclamation of all of his accolades and everything he's done on Water Resources Board, as a matter of fact, Ron, I think you were one of the original members of the Stormwater Board when we started that study to do a Stormwater Committee.
I believe so. If it was longer than two weeks ago, I'd forget it.
So we're here to honor Ron tonight, so I'm going to read through several different items. Ron Crabtree serves as the inaugural chairman of the Stormwater Advisory Committee from September of 2002 until its dissolution in November 2009, having been a tremendous resource and provided enormous value in accomplishing the city's Stormwater Program goals in those seven years. Whereas he served on the Water Resources Board since 2012, and has served his third four-year term, during his tenure on the Board, he oversaw the creation of multiple special sanitary sewer assessment districts incentivizing development for the city along the Salem Highway Corridor, the Joby Jackson Corridor, and the Medical Center Parkway Corridor. Ron advocated the Water Resources Department culture aligned with effective utility management that focuses on leadership development, fostering strategic planning, optimizing organizational structure, measuring key performance indicators, and advancing continuous improvement. Whereas, our city is fortunate to have such a devoted and dedicated person as Ron Crabtree to have served in the best interest of the customers of the Murfreesboro Water Resources Department and the citizens of Murfreesboro. Now therefore, I shame McFarland, Mayor of the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, on behalf of the entire council to hereby proclaim September 5th, 2002. We had to backdate this, so we were doing this September 5th, but so I will say today, October 19th. So you've got September the 5th and October the 19th.
September the 19th.
Yeah, we should have changed it to September 19th.
Excuse me. September 19th. My watch here says 10:19. As a day to honor and recognize the accomplishments of Ron Crabtree and ask all citizens to join me in this well-deserved recognition. Ron?
This is quite ugly. There are two factors important in any venture. One is time, and the other one is place. I can't think of a more exciting time to be alive than today, nor a better place to be than Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Thank you. Where's this picture going now?
All right, so Ron, you're going to be September 5th, September 19th, and October 19th. So we'll do that for you.
Trifecta.
That's right. First time that's ever happened. All right, do we have any public comment on agenda items? Mr. Ossie, no comments? Okay. All right, you have the consent agenda. You have eight items on your consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled off of the consent agenda?
Motion second.
Motion second, seeing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Kales Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. You have the City Council meeting minutes for September the 5th, 2024.
So moved.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Kales Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to land use matters, ordinance 24OZ28, rezoning property along Robert Street. Mr. Blomley?
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. We have four public hearings this evening, the first one of which is a rezoning for two lots that are located along the south side of Robert Street, just to the south of the Oakland's Park. You see on the map before you, it's just to the west of North Highland Avenue, the third and fourth lots off of North Highland Avenue on the south side of Robert Street. The two lots in question are currently zoned OGR and CCO, so OGR being General Office Residential District and CCO being, of course, the City Core Overlay District. Mr. Burns wishes to build two single-family homes on these lots, one on each, and the existing setbacks of the OGR zoning district are posing an issue with him fitting houses on these two lots. So the OGR zone requires 10-foot side setbacks, and the primary reason why Mr. Burns is requesting that these properties be rezoned to RS8 is because the RS8 zoning classification has five-foot setbacks, which will allow for a more generous building envelope in order to build new single-family homes on each of these two lots. As you can see on the map before you, across the street, the park is zoned CM. To the east and to the south is zoned OGR, but those are developed with single-family homes, and to the west is zoned CMRS8 Medical Office Residential Single Family Zoning, also developed with single-family homes. So what Mr. Burns wants to do is, in building single-family homes on these lots, is consistent with the existing land uses in the area. The zoning is compatible with the existing land uses in the area. As I mentioned, the primary purpose for his request is to just have wider building envelopes. Staff is supportive of this request to RS8 for the following reasons. The proposal is consistent with the residential single-family land use character area that the North Highland Avenue Planning Study identifies as being appropriate for the subject parcels. The conceptual plot plan layouts that Mr. Burns has submitted show that single-family homes can be built on these two lots that are compliant with the RS8 and CCO zones. And finally, the proposed single-family residential zoning will enable land uses that are compatible with the existing single-family residential uses in the immediate vicinity. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on August the 7th and then voted to recommend approval of this request. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after our public hearing this evening, and Mr. Burns is here as well, if you have any questions for him.
Any questions? You're a Cal Bear fan here recently, aren't you, as an Auburn fan?
I'm sorry?
A Cal Bear fan? Is that right?
That was a rough Saturday.
Had to throw that out there. All right, let's move to, we'll need to hold a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, if you'll come to the podium, you'll have three minutes if you're representing yourself, five minutes representing a group or an HOA. If you'll keep all questions directed to the council, we'll get those answered at the end of the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and will now consider on first reading ordinance 24OZ28.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Kales Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll now move to item 12, ordinance 24OZ29, rezoning property along Old Salem Road. Mr. Blomley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our second public hearing today is for the rezoning of 29.5 acres located along the south side of Old Salem Road. You'll see on the map before you, it's the area colored in blue. It's property that Redeemer Classical Academy was going to build its campus on here a couple of years ago, and they decided against locating their school on this property, and now the property is for sale, and Mr. Alcorn, the applicant, wishes to develop a single-family residential subdivision on the property. The property is currently zoned CF, Commercial Fringe, and he is requesting a rezoning to RS12. Directly to the south of the subject property is Puckett Creek, and along New Salem Highway is Commercial Highway and Commercial Fringe zoning. You'll see to the southwest of the subject property is in the city, and it's zoned RS15, and it's the location of the Belmore Single Family Residential Subdivision. Directly across Old Salem Road to the north are large single-family lots in the unincorporated county. The future land use map of the Murfreesboro 2035 Plan identifies this property as general commercial, and we think that the existing zoning informed the recommendation to that future land use map. However, a closer look at the conditions in the area show that Puckett Creek does run through the commercial area in between New Salem Highway and Old Salem Road, kind of creating a natural barrier between the commercial along New Salem Highway and the property that's being requested along Old Salem Road. Because of that, staff believes this is an appropriate instance to use the future land use map's transition policy, which allows for transitions not following exactly parcel lines, but looking at environmental factors in the area and other factors. So the existence of Puckett Creek seems to be a natural place to break the commercial, or to transition from the commercial designation to a residential designation. Mr. Alcorn has submitted a conceptual lot layout showing approximately 21 lots on the property. Of course, this is conceptual at this point, and there are a number of factors, including the proposed flood study, which could impact the layout. But this is just kind of to show you, absent any other factors, what could potentially be developed on the property. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on August the 7th and recommended its approval. There was quite a bit of discussion at that time regarding the ongoing flood study for this area. In speaking with the city's floodplain administrator earlier today, Ms. Jennifer Knopf, she indicated that a draft of the flood study is complete and that we are reviewing it and hopeful to submit it to FEMA in the near future, in the very near future. And the turnaround time with FEMA to review and potentially approve the flood study would be perhaps two months or so. In addition, Ms. Michelle Emerson is here. If you have any questions regarding the culvert at the intersection of Constantine and Old Salem, that was the subject of discussion at the Planning Commission meeting as well. So Ms. Knopf and Ms. Emerson are here if you have any questions regarding the flood study or the culvert. I will mention that the Planning Commission's recommendation of approval on August the 7th was subject to the following conditions. Number one, no building permits may be issued and no buildings constructed on the property until completion of the culverts being replaced along Old Salem Road. And number two, no building permits may be issued and no buildings constructed on the property until a flood study is completed with established elevations and building envelopes. Staff's recommendation regarding the request is that staff is supportive of the rezoning request for the following reasons. The rezoning is an appropriate use of the transition policy, allowing for a transition from the commercial areas south of Puckett Creek to the large lot, single-family residential north of Puckett Creek and south of Old Salem Road. Number two, the proposed single-family detached dwellings allowed by the RS12 zoning would be compatible with the single-family land uses in the area. And number three, the proposed RS12 district is a decrease in land use intensity from the existing CF zoning in an environmentally constrained area. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after our public hearing, as will Ms. Knopf and Ms. Emerson.
About the culvert, I know a local developer that's worked in the area had volunteered to do the culvert at his own expense. Did that get arranged, or do we have a schedule on the culvert?
I will defer to Ms. Emerson on that, Mr. Wright.
Yep.
We're using our contract with Rollins to do the work. They're currently working on Medical Center, and then they're going to pull off Medical Center closer to the holidays. Then they're going to go to Constantine, so it should be in November. We are working in the next few weeks to start locating where the pipe is going to go and potholeing for the gas line that's out there.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Blomley? I have a question. I zoomed out. The property where you have Wild Blossom, Constantine Drive, of course, Old Salem, but this property, we rezoned this many years ago for Commercial Fringe for Redeemer, but are those subdivisions, county subdivisions or city subdivisions?
So where you see Wild Blossom Lane, that's zoned RS15, that's the Gilli property. There have been plans approved for that property for a single-family residential subdivision, but Ms. Gilli has never moved forward with that. That's in the city. And then where you see south of Constantine, where you see the RS15 zoning, that's the Belmore subdivision. Mr. Alcorn developed the first section of Belmore, and Hensley Construction is developing the second section right now, and it's in the city as well.
Okay, so that is in the city right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But Old Salem, is that county or city?
The right-of-way of Old Salem, and I think the telestrator is broken right now, so I can't do my John Madden impersonation, but the right-of-way of Old Salem directly in front of the subject property is in the city limits.
But not the road? The right, a portion of the right-of-way?
No, the entire right-of-way of Old Salem in front of the subject property is in the city limits.
Okay. I'm just looking at this, seeing that, you know, if we put, if we approve 21 units, how we pick up trash on a two-lane road, those types of concerns, that does this lead us to have to upgrade that entire road at some point?
It is on our major transportation plan, and so during the preliminary platting process, we would be determining what improvements would be required along Old Salem during the development. And I would mention, because it's a collector road, our zoning ordinance does require that the driveways be designed so that backing out into the street is not permitted. It's, there has to be a turnaround on site, and so that the individual driveways will be able to go headfirst into Old Salem.
All right, any questions? All right, we need to hold a public hearing for the rezoning of this 29.5 acres. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider on first reading ordinance 24OZ29. I just have one, besides, will this development be responsible for paying for the right-of-way frontage in front of their property if we have to do upgrades to that?
property, or to dedicate right-of-way, or both, or submit fees in lieu of, if that, I'm not aware of if any of that has been determined for certain yet.
Okay. The only other concern I have, and I think, you know, these large lots, I mean, most of them are 43,000 to 50,000 square feet, which is great inside the city. We've all gotten either tagged or emailed with some of the drainage issues that are happening off of Constantine Drive, and I really don't like approving something with the anticipation that this culvert's going to fix the issue. I mean, we feel very confident that it does, but, I mean, my question is, what happens if that doesn't fix the issue that's happening out there? I mean, that may be a question for an engineer, but that's my concern, is, I mean, we think that that culvert being undersized is going to be able to help get that water through, but what if it still floods after we upgrade that culvert? Or do we feel confident that once we upgrade that, this is going to solve the issue in that subdivision?
They're the two engineers.
I'm sorry to put everyone on the spot, but I...
Six engineers here, Rob.
Yeah.
Looking at the other. No, you know, the culvert's actually upstream of this, so it, you know, I think the bigger tail will be the flood state that's currently underway, and it's pretty obvious their setup is a state lot, so, I mean, you can expect, you know, we would hope that that would be, that information would be transferred to the buyer, there's estate lots, and the backyard will flood from time to time. So I think you're exactly on point, Mayor, that, you know, it's just something that the buyers would need to know upfront.
How is the city, can we relay that? Because, I mean, we've seen this out Bradford Place with Sinkin Creek, or that Sinkin Creek out, or is that Bushman Creek? Where Bradford, Hamptons, and we have that drainage area, what's that?
Dry Branch.
Dry Branch, it was one of the creeks, but my big concern is that if we open up that culvert, and all of that water that's now sitting at this subdivision starts going through, people need to know that you're getting a big lot, but there may be a portion of that lot that's going to be unusable whenever it storms.
Mayor, members of council, I may just add a little commentary onto that. With the proposed flood study, the lots that are fronting on Old Salem here will be in the floodplain, and so that would be a very obvious note to the users, and then we will also include that information on plaits and plans and building permit applications. Sometimes those things are not readily reviewed by owners, buyers, and occupants, and so a lot of times the folks at our front counters have to do a lot of that education when we do have building permit applications or other things that come up. But we do try to put notes in the record on the deeds and then use the flood maps to help signify the areas that are flood-prone and also restricted use for the property.
Do the conditions on the Planning Commission follow through with this recommendation? Is that what part of the... I think we need to, it'd be great if somebody makes a motion to make that subject to, contingent, subject to staff comments, or, I don't know, that's what we do in Planning Commission, but Adam, what do you...
My understanding, at least with respect, and this is based on conversations with planning staff, is that a lot of the two conditions that are listed in the council communication, they're not in the ordinance, and that those two conditions are items that can usually be addressed at the preliminary plat stage of the approval process. If there's someone in planning or engineering that wants to correct me, and...
No, I think that's correct, Mr. Tucker.
But that being said, if you wanted to, if you, it's not in the ordinance, those conditions, so the ordinance would have to be amended to put those conditions in the ordinance.
So we can't make a motion for the, or as opposed, as proposed?
You could, you could make a motion and then ask for that to be added to the ordinance. No, you'd have to, we'd have to have an amendment, vote on the amendment, and then vote on the ordinance as amended.
I'll make a motion to amend the ordinance to include all of the comments that we made at the Planning Commission.
The two conditions.
The two conditions, yes.
The two conditions that are in the council communication.
We have a motion, a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Kales Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Now the motion on the...
Motion as amended.
Yep. All right, motion second. I just want to make a comment. I'm for this project. I think it's a better use than the Commercial Fringe that we have there. I'm going to abstain, I don't want to vote no for it, but I do have been consistent that I don't like voting for projects contingent upon something else being done to make that project work. I mean, like, if this project were going through and that culvert had already been upgraded, and we can see that the culvert is working, then I would be the, if I could make a motion to approve, I'd be the first one to do that, but I'm not voting on anything that the work's not been done yet, and we know there's a problem already out there. So, I mean, we've got the things in place to mitigate that from happening with what is being on the ordinance, but I'm not voting for anything, it's like voting for something on first reading contingent upon nine things happening before we vote on it on second reading. So I'm, I think it's a good project, but if the culvert was done right now and we saw that it was functioning, I would be okay with it, but I'm not going to vote for it until that culvert is done and it's, we're showing... And it's, we're showing the neighbors that we've all gotten tagged on Facebook that those lots that are under construction are not flooding. Is that what we, do we have that in place with this motion to mitigate from that happening?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, could you repeat the question?
The question, the motion that has been made with the planning commission comments basically are for the FEMA study and for-
Culvert completion.
The construction of the culvert.
Construction of the culvert.
Yeah, I mean, so I would, I would vote for this if someone would amend that the culvert would be installed and functioning to keep the other neighbors from flooding. I mean-
I'll amend my motion to that, because I think that was the purpose of what we were discussing, it planned, not just that it was in, but that it was functioning.
So what we say contingent upon with the motion, if he's changing, yeah?
I amend that motion to a functioning culvert, not just installed, installed and functioning.
And could I see clarification, because this, I'm going off of what is in the council communication and the, the planning commission minutes. Is, what is in the council communication is that no building permits may be issued, which is different than making the rezoning conditioned on these events, these conditions taking place. And so the question is, where, is it the rezoning that is conditioned, or the issuing of permits?
I think what would make, I think what would make more sense is that the final plat could not be recorded until, which basically says you can't close lots and you can't get building permits, that the final plat would not be signed for approval until we have a functioning and operational culvert that's alleviating those issues that are upstream, and then the flood study being completed at the same time. Would that be okay?
That, that adds clarity, and it's something that I can put into an ordinance, yes.
I would appreciate if someone would make that motion, we could move this on and-
Well, I'm functioning culvert and, what was the other thing?
The flood study.
The flood study.
Presentation of flood study.
That's my amended motion to replace the motion we just voted on.
Second.
Motion a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Now we'll consider ordinance 24OZ29 as amended.
Motion to approve.
Second. So the final plat cannot be approved until there's a functioning culvert?
Yeah.
And the flood studies?
Yes, correct, which is what we talked about.
And I think for the neighbors who didn't come to the public hearing, but have all really, Jamie, you've been, had a lot of information on that, this basically ensures that this project cannot be left for building permits, or really signed for final plat until those conditions are met. And if they're not met, then it doesn't, it doesn't get recorded. So, all right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yeah, a second.
Okay, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Mike.
Mike McFarland!
Okay. Yes.
Was that Shane or Mike?
I don't know. Mr. Alcorn, I think you'll have a great project that people will be proud of. We just need to be able to protect the people who are upstream from us. Yes, sir. All right, ordinance 24OZ30, rezoning property along New Salem Highway. This is 21.14 acres.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next public hearing tonight is for the rezoning of the Fellowship United Methodist Church property, located at the southwest corner of the intersection of New Salem Highway and Salem Creek Drive. Property is currently zoned RS-15, and they are requesting to rezone approximately 12.4 acres along the northern portion of their property that's in yellow on the map before you, U2CF Commercial Fringe District, and the southern 8.74 acres in the blue to PRD Planned Residential District for a townhome community. The existing church use is allowed by special use permit in the RS-15 zone, and the church has gone to the Board of Zoning Appeals several times for expansions to the existing church use. Now, what the CF zoning would enable on the northern half of the property would be a couple of things. One, it would allow the church use by right, so that they would not have to go back to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special use permit every time they wanted to do an expansion. Or if some of the property in front, they have a good deal of undeveloped property along New Salem Highway, if they ever wanted to subdivide, that property and sell out parcels, the commercial fringe zoning would allow them to do so. The southern portion is proposed to be zoned PRD for a 47-unit, single-family attached townhome community. The applicant for the townhome community is the applicant for the rezoning, Harney Homes. The future land use map of the Murfreesboro 2035 Comprehensive Plan identifies the property as public institutional. When we drafted the future land use map, the existing land use of the church informed the recommendation of that, of that property for public institutional, since churches are institutional land uses. At that time, we didn't contemplate that they may want to have a portion of their property redeveloped. With that being said, however, we feel that this is an appropriate use of the transition policy in the future land use map, considering that it recommends neighborhood commercial land use character further to the east along New Salem Highway, and this would kind of be an extension of that commercial land use. And then the, the townhomes would be a transition from the commercial along New Salem south to the single-family residential uses of the Salem Creek subdivision across Spence Creek. Directly to the north of the subject property is the, is property, that's the former Bell property. The Bell Tower Apartments are proposed to be developed where you see the PUD just to the, to the northwest across the street. The PUD directly to the west is the Boxwood Plantation PUD that was zoned that way about 15 years ago, but has never, but has never had any plans approved for development. Of course, as I mentioned, the Salem Creek Single Family Subdivision is located directly to the south of the subject property, and it's zoned a combination of RS-15 and RS-12. Directly to the east of the subject property across Salem Creek Drive is the Church of Christ, as well as the Ashton at Salem Creek Townhome Development. And there's PCD zoning along New Salem Highway across Salem Creek Drive, where there is a Dollar General and a car wash. The planning commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on August the 7th and voted to recommend approval at that time. Staff is in support of this request for the following reasons. The rezoning request is an appropriate use of the city's future land use map transition policy, using Spence Creek and its floodway as a natural transition between land uses. Number two, the proposed CF zoning provides additional opportunities to provide commercial services to one of the fastest-growing areas of the city. And number three, the proposed single-family attached dwellings would be compatible with the single-family attached land use directly across Salem Creek Drive. Mr. Matt Taylor of SEC has a brief presentation regarding the PRD portion of this request. Be happy to answer any questions before or after our public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. Mayor, members of council, I'm Matt Taylor of SEC, here tonight to represent the project. I do have a brief presentation for what we've termed Salem Town, which is the PRD portion of the request. As Mr. Blomley says, about a 21-acre site in total on the south side of New Salem Highway, just to the west of Salem Creek Drive. It's highlighted here in the pink and the white lines. Fellowship United Methodist will remain on the property and retain the northern 12, 12 and 1/2 acres, while they will sell the southern 8.7 acres to Harney Homes for development of an attached townhouse project. It is zoned RS-15 today. This is standing basically on the bank of Spence Creek. You can see there's a great distance between here and the church, so there's a lot of separation between the existing homes and this proposed project. And then this is kind of the flip view. This is backstanding close to the church, looking back toward the existing homes in Salem Creek. And you can see there's a very nice buffer along that stream on both sides. Those trees would remain and continue to act as a buffer between the two projects. Picture of the existing church, as well as the existing townhomes across the street that Mr. Blomley mentioned, and then an example of the homes inside of Salem Creek subdivision to the south. The plan itself, as Mr. Blomley said, allows for 47 homes, gives a density of about 5.4 units per acre. All of our utilities would be underground. We would have one public, one access onto public right-of-way on Salem Creek Drive, and they would have an additional access back into the church parking lot to allow for two ways in and out. We'd have about three acres, so about 25% of the site would be open space. You see our stormwater located on the, kind of the western or the southern side of the property, the left side of the screen here. We've also planned for basically a city standard street sections, a curb and gutter, and then all of our garages will be set back at least 35 feet from the back of sidewalk to allow for two cars to park back-to-back inside of the driveway. All the homes will be set up on an HPR. We will have sidewalks along both sides of all of our streets. We've got amenities and visitor parking planned throughout, or dispersed throughout. These will be private streets, although they will look basically identical to public streets. And then all of our owners here will be members of the HOA, which will be managed by a third-party association. The homes themselves will be very similar to other Harney Homes throughout our community. All brick, stone, fiber, cement. They will be two-story homes, a minimum of 1,350 square feet, and there'll be a mix of one and two-car garages. We will have no vinyl siding except in the trim and soffit areas. So I said these were very similar. They're similar in style and form, but we have changed up the materials and the colors so that as you drive around our community, they're not all aging at the same time, or look the exact same. So you get a diversity throughout our city. So you can see here a lot of variation in roofline, front building plane, decorative garage doors. A lot of interest in this front elevation. And then as you go to the back, you'll still have variation in the roofline and the building plane. Each of these patios will have fences to provide for some privacy. We just didn't show it here, because we're trying to highlight the architecture and not the fences. And then the amenities, we'll have a large open space, obviously along the creek, that'll stay in a natural state. And then we will have entry signage as you come in off of Salem Creek Drive. And then we'll have a pickleball and a pavilion that's located toward the central part of the neighborhood. Here's some example pictures of those. And then just highlighting those two access points that I mentioned, the yellow is the access to the public right-of-way, while the red is back into the church. And then we will have landscaping throughout. The blue, we will enhance that to be a buffer, try to screen the rear of those units as you drive down, and then drive down Salem Creek Drive and enter from Highway 99. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor? All right, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this property rezoning request? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We will now consider on first reading ordinance 24OZ30.
So move.
Second.
Motion a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we have ordinance 24O31 amending the zoning ordinance airport.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our final public hearing tonight is regarding a very short ordinance amendment regarding the city's airport. So one of the things that we have in our, in looking at expansions at the airport, new buildings, we've determined that the, it's a little bit unclear how we treat those from a zoning standpoint. And so the planning department has worked with the legal department to craft an ordinance amendment that would allow expansions to the city's airport by right. And that's not to say that there's no scrutiny. Obviously, any improvements that go on the city's airport property are subject to city council oversight. The airport layout plan and airport master plan are subject to the planning commission's oversight, and the, any improvements are also subject to federal aviation administration oversight. So we think this amendment clarifies the process by which, by which improvements at the city's airport property are allowed, which would be by right without a special use permit from the Board of Zoning Appeals. The planning commission had held a public hearing on this ordinance amendment on August the 7th and voted to recommend its approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right, seeing none, we'll now hold a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this zoning ordinance change, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We will now consider on first reading ordinance 24O31.
So move.
Second.
Motion a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Now we'll look to items we have on motion. Item 15, Beezy Road Extension. Mr. Griffith?
Thank you, Mayor. The first item I have tonight is, or actually, the first two items is a CIP transfer. We've, we've put them as the two separate projects, so they're listed as two separate items on the, on the agenda. There we go. In December of 2020, the city, Charlie Mitchell, Ten Tom Realty, and Costco entered into a developers agreement outlining the terms and conditions for extending Beezy Road, which is kind of this, I guess, I don't know brown, I don't know what color that is, but the short section, labeled Beezy Road Extension. With the city's new connector road, which is now called Tommy Bragg Drive, to date, they have not fulfilled their obligations for this project. Consequently, staff has started the process of calling on the performance bond in the amount of $155,000 and scheduled to start the roadway construction under annual maintenance contracts. Initially, the project will need to be funded from reallocated CIP funds with plans for reimbursement using the performance bonds once we have received those proceeds. The city, of course, will also reserves our right to seek reimbursement from either Charlie Mitchell or Ten Tom Realty if construction cost exceeds those performance bonds. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to Tommy Bragg Drive CIP transfer.
Yes, sir. This is, is in regards to the longer section of roadway that's been under construction for some time. In January of 2023, council approved the construction contract for the recently named Tommy Bragg Drive roadway project. This includes building a connector road approximately 0.3 miles from the north end of Beezy Road to River Rock Boulevard, and incorporates a three-lane bridge over the west fork of the Stones River. As this project has progressed, additional funding has been required due to unforeseen costs, including right-of-way acquisition settlements, extra, extra engineering for the flood study. We've also had to make changes to the, to the bridge itself due to some of the FEMA flood model. There's also additional bridge foundation work was necessary due to unexpected subsurface condition. Due to these changes, staff recommends approving the CIP transfer and authorizing an additional 5% for the current construction contract. This adjustment aligns with staff's goals for the roadway projects, ensuring adequate funds to address potential contingencies. We'll say this project is now substantially complete, and thus the urgency to finish the Beezy section as well. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
If thrown out, I'll move for approval.
Motion a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, now Blackman Manson Burt Knob Right-of-Way Acquisition. Chris?
Yes, sir. This would approve funding for acquisition of right-of-way and easements up to 10% above to the appraised values. We've got a combination of right-of-way, slope, easements, and temporary construction easements are required for 16 total parcels on the Blackman Manson Burt Knob Intersection projects. We haven't actually started receiving appraisals on this, but once we receive those appraisals, it'll give us the, the go-ahead and start negotiations with the property owners. If you'll, if you'll remember, we're trying to catch up with- We haven't actually started receiving appraisals on this, but once we receive those appraisals, it'll give us the the go-ahead and start negotiations with the property owners. If you'll remember, we're trying to catch up with the school construction. They're scheduled to open up by August of 2025, and we would like to have this project complete as well. If agreements are not reached, staff further recommends proceeding with condemnation and and depositing the appraised value into court. We've also included an exhibit with the current project layout is is in your documents. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Chris. All right, we'll move to the purchase of 12 Lucas devices. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, I come asked them for approval of purchase 12 Lucas device. These are chest compression devices that come from Stryker sales. This device delivers consistent, high-quality chest compression during patients with cardiac arrest. Also, this purchase of 12 will put one on all of our frontline apparatuses that respond to medical calls. The total cost is $265,770, which a portion of that is coming from the ARPA funds, up $230,700, and remaining $35,070 is funded to our department budget. Staff recommends approval of these 12 Stryker devices.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you.
All right, move to item 19, EverNorth Care Solutions. This is an EAP agreement. Randall.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. You had before your request by staff to approve an agreement with EverNorth Care Solutions to provide mental health assistance to employees for their EAP program. As you're probably aware, an EAP program provides access to counseling services for things such as stress, anxiety, depression, and a lot of other traumatic events. In addition to these services, they also provide resources for to help manage personal and professional life incidents, legal assistance, and so forth. After a thorough review with the RFP process, we selected Enworth because of their because of two things. One, the excellence review we got from the reference checks, and then also because they have the ability to provide services to our public safety employees. In addition to that, they will be able to provide 12 EAP visits per year for our public safety employees. Now, the costs are a little bit more expensive than we're paying today. They will have a dedicated hotline for them. With that said, the cost is around $57,000. It's going to be funded by our insurance plan. We're requesting your approval to move forward.
So moved.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 21, Contract with the International Association of Chiefs of Police.
Next, we have for your consideration is the request to purchase mobile printers from Tyler Technology. The department is needing to purchase 100 printers to equip police vehicles for our e-citation system. This purchase is available through our current contract with Tyler Tech for $84,552 and will be funded by the FY24 CIP. And I'll attempt to answer any questions that you might have.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 21, Contract with the International Association of Chiefs of Police.
Next, we have for your consideration is the contract with the ICP for their promotional assessment center. The police department has been using outside sources to facilitate promotional assessment centers for internal promotions within the department. This is a new contract for the rank of captain, and the ICP produces a legally defensible promotional process, which is highly recognized as one of the top police associations across the world. This is a five-year contract with an initial cost of $24,200 for the development and completion of the process. If the department decides to continue the process each additional year, it would be $10,000 for each subsequent year. And the funding will come from the department's operating budget, and I'll attempt to answer any questions that you might have.
If no questions, move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we have amendment number two, the purchasing agreement with Axon Police.
Yes. Next, we have the amendment number two to the master service and purchasing agreement with Axon. With the hiring of additional staff, the department has a need to purchase 30 additional body worn cameras and also 24 in-car video cameras for our new patrol vehicles. This amendment adds $112,294 annually to the remainder of the tenure contract. This expense will be funded in part by the department's operating budget and the FY24 CIP, as future expenses will be budgeted accordingly in the department's operating budget, and I'll attempt to answer any questions that you might have.
Move for approval.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll now move to move to 2024, the Edward Edward Byrne Memorial JAG Program and MOU with RCSO.
Next, for your consideration is the memorandum of understanding between the city and the Rutherford County Sheriff's Office for the 2024 JAG Program. This grant is in memory of Edward Byrne, who was a New York City police officer who was killed in the line of duty at the age of 22 years old in 1988 while he was guarding a witness who was testifying in a drug case. The city and the county are eligible to receive a joint award of $61,957 from this program and will equally share the proceeds. The sheriff's office has agreed to allow the city to serve as the fiscal agent for this grant. The city's allocation of $30,978 will be used to purchase tasers and related supplies, and the deadline for the application is October 22nd, 2024. And I'll attempt to answer any questions that you might have.
I think I say this every year, Bill will remember this, and so does Madeline, but this used to be the grant that Hiram Lester would bring through every single year for those who remember Hiram.
It was a long time ago.
Sure do.
All right, do we have a motion is second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we have purchase of body armor from Galls.
Lastly, we have for your consideration is the purchase of body armor from Galls LLC. The department is needing to replace 100 sets of body armor and carriers. That's part of a five-year rotation plan due to the expiration dates for vest. We currently have a contract with Galls, and the cost would be $153,439. That will come from the department's operating budget, and I'll attempt to answer any questions that you might have.
You said replace these are being bad shape. Will we donate them somewhere, or do we just? I know sometimes we donate.
Sometimes we donate them to other agencies. They have a five-year expiration on them, but sometimes other agencies that didn't have the funds, we can do a transfer to other smaller agencies like that.
Good. With that, I'll make a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Deputy Chief.
All right, we have an appointment to the library board, but I would like to preface this appointment. Adam can help me with this, but this will be a topic, I think, at our our retreat. It was not going to recommend appointment to the library board until we had the discussion of what some of the attorneys are working on about actually decreasing that board to seven different members, but we also were having trouble having a quorum at the meeting. So Susan Quisenberry had reached out to serve, but with the understanding that this board may change from 11 to 7, depending upon, you know, how the discussion goes with the council and also with other municipalities. So recommending for an appointment and to be able to get to where we can have a quorum.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, moving from library to beer.
We have two regular beer permits. One is a new location for a restaurant located at 2614 Robbie Corley Lane, and the other is a location for a new restaurant located at 1798 West Northfield Boulevard. All applicants meet the requirements for issuing the beer permits per the City Code Chapter 4, alcoholic beverages, with the exception of pending building and codes inspections for regular beer permits.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, any statements to be paid?
No, there are none.
Any other business from staff? Any other business from the council? Ms. Everwater?
I would like to say congratulations to our very own Officer McAdams and Officer Hill, who were recognized by WGNS as Public Safety Officers of the Month. And I think sometimes I take for granted how safe they keep us and me and Ms. Gales Harris in the evenings when we walk down to our cars and keep us safe while we're in here, so we appreciate you both. Thank you.
And Valerie Smith has already exited the building, but she was here for Mr. Crabtree.
But Valerie, it was just announced is, why don't you announce that, Darren?
Yes.
And John as well?
Yes, and John Strick. So Valerie Smith, she took over as interim Water Resources Director when I became city manager, and she's done an outstanding job, gotten two or three board meetings under her belt, and I think the board may be appreciating her style a little bit better than mine. So upon that successful performance in that position, we we put her into the, or I appointed her or promoted her into the permanent position of Water Resources Director.
Great.
So she's she's done an outstanding job for the department and the city, and and kind of a cascading effect of that is that John Strickland, who was our Water Resource Recovery Facility plant manager, was promoted to Effective Utility Management Coordinator, which is effectively a quality assurance, quality control type, making sure that the performance of the department overall is meeting the benchmarks that that our industry requires. So we want to congratulate both of them for those promotions.